All righty then. We will. We will call our special meeting of the governing board on Tuesday, February 18th, to order at 6:00. All members are here minus Mrs. Frank, Ms. Frank and Mrs. O'Brien.
I move to adopt the agenda.
Five seconds. Five seconds.
Was that two seconds?
Five.
Oh, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. So we are going to begin with you guys, correct?
Good evening. President Ordway, members of the board, Dr. Finch. We are pleased to be here with you this evening to discuss a couple of the topics that have come up in recent board meetings. With the first one being, what is the, or how is the central office supporting safe and supportive learning environments for our students? And specifically, students who have shown perhaps more extreme behaviors and those students that are general ed students, not students with disabilities. As you are well aware and have had a few presentations with the futures report, we have had focused discussion at length about what we are doing with students with disabilities and behavior. And so tonight, we can give you more of a look as far as what we're doing on the other side of that. And so we have Dr. McCusker, we have Mr. Warner here as well, and we will go through a variety of topics, a variety of items that are related to this topic. We have chosen to use the lens or the framework of the timeline of the futures report, given that we already have a work team that is focusing on behavior. And so given that, we wanted to make sure that what we show to you tonight can be seen as how it works in tandem with what is already happening with the behavior team and the students with disabilities. And so I think we are planning to go through the items that we have, and we can talk about some of these items in more detail if you wish, and then we would like to hear your feedback and perhaps have some questions or direction to us moving forward. That sound good? Okay. So if we start with, if you go on the second page, okay, if we start with the handout today, the items that we are going to highlight will be the ones that are in the yellow highlighting and that are in bold. And so I'm going to ask Dr. McCusker, perhaps you can start us off since the first one's deal with Boystown, and that's been a big piece for us this year, Constitution and Vista Peak, and then some of our thoughts moving forward.
Absolutely. Good evening, governing board members, President Ordway and board members. It is my pleasure to talk about Boystown. I am a Boystown proponent and a previous Boystown principal, so it is something that is near and dear to my instructional heart. And we have had the fortune, the good fortune of providing the Boystown program not only at Vista Peak, but also at our Constitution campus. And so this year has been a year of data collection and assuring that the program itself is implemented with fidelity. So the framework that lives on the Constitution campus, which specifically focuses on our general ed students. We really wanted to assure that we had well-managed classroom, which is a component of Boystown implemented on the Constitution campus. The hopeful outcomes of this implementation would be less referrals to special education, so our general education students would be able to receive specific interventions through well-managed classroom, as well as social skill instruction. So at the heart of Boystown curricula is really the social skills. Looking through the lens of certainly students make poor choices and there always is an opportunity for discipline, but Boystown flips the script and really looks at discipline through the lens of how can we replace that behavior with social skill instruction and supports? And so Constitution has seen some remarkable effects in Boystown implementation and also with the reduction of overall student referrals for discipline, as well as referrals for special education. So we are tracking that data, meeting with the campus, also having conversations with Boystown and the collaborative coaching structure from Boystown. And so again, we are very hopeful that with the implementation of this, perhaps now that we have piloted not only at Vista Peak, which is of course for special ed and not the focus for this evening, but with the pilots for both of these programs, that we could replicate it on other campuses with the positive results. I can certainly answer questions about Boystown, specific to well-managed classroom, which is at Constitution for our general.
Would it be, would it be possible to, I don't know how big the curriculum is, but to have some type of a background so we can all understand what the premise of Boystown is and how it's implemented?
Absolutely.
Would that be helpful for the rest of us?
Absolutely. I'm happy to do that. Again, the premise is really to focus on the social skill instruction. For example, if a student has an issue, let's say they get into a verbal argument with another student, we certainly in more old-school ways might look through the lens of, okay, we're going to dispense some discipline, but with Boystown, the opportunity to provide some social skill instruction becomes a part of that process. Where the administrator and/or teacher actually sits down with a student and walks them through the different lens or the different way they could have tackled that problem. They look through Boystown skills, they utilize all the different Boystown skills, which are present throughout the whole campus and in every classroom, and they're able to cite those Boystown skills and actually ask the student, what would have been a good Boystown skill to utilize instead of getting in an argument with Susie or Bobby? And so they provide that instruction directly to the student, one-to-one, and they're able to do that, and then the student is repeating back what they could have done differently. And the hope for outcome, again, with social skill instruction, is that it's replicated and they practice that when they go back out into their classroom environment.
So it's a real-time behavior modification implementation that?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
There, I would add on to that, President Ordway, as Dr. McCusker said, they really are, they're teaching this spot for them. And so if the child is having trouble perhaps apologizing to someone, they teach them a specific concrete strategy at that, this is how you can apologize, and giving them latitude for it. So I would say the impact has been really quite remarkable so far in terms of what we've seen at Constitution. So I've been with the district, as you know, for a year and a half. I walked the classrooms with Principal Laba last year on a monthly basis, and she was frustrated. And so some of the things, Ms. Tweedy, that you brought up in the board meeting, she was frustrated with some of those behaviors when I would walk with her last year. And so seeing this year, the first two months, so August, September, didn't see a big difference, and we wouldn't expect it perhaps because it's at the start, but before the first fall break that we had, Principal Laba did say, you know what, I'm starting to see a shift, okay, right now on my campus, and I'm really starting to feel that the tone is different here. And so fast forward that about two more months, and when I walk with her, it is different. The Boystown is making really a positive difference on the campus, and she is noting it, the staff is noting it, and you can sense it with the students. And I know, Dr. McCusker, you've seen that as well when you walk the campus.
And if I may also add on to that, one of the structures and the expectations of the Boystown model is the consistency. And so consistency makes my heart happy. And so when you walk into any classroom that is adherent to the Boystown model, you're going to see the same lesson being discussed, let's say, how to appropriately apologize, I'll use Dr. Zerbock's example. And each classroom would be taking a moment at prescribed times, again, consistent across the whole campus, to discuss that, have questions from their classroom, and then move into the rest of the day. So there is very focused and structured expectations within Boystown that everyone is a part of, and the consistency really provides a nice context for our students who require some more social skill instruction.
Now, so when, when there's an issue and then the student, somebody conferences with them, and it was said a teacher or an administrator, how is the teacher having time to do that while she's teaching?
Ms. Tweedy, governing board members, excellent question. I believe within the context of any teacher's day, whether they be a special ed or a general ed teacher, I think providing an opportunity to provide that social skill instruction, it doesn't have to be laborious, it doesn't have to be long, but certainly being able to take one to two minutes to be able to provide that skill, and certainly it can be replicated across the whole classroom. It's an opportunity for the whole classroom to provide context and to support the student. It's never a call-out, it's not supposed to embarrass the student, it is supposed to provide them with that fabric so they can take and generalize that. So it's embedded within the classroom structure, the classroom conversations in the mornings, it can really become a part of the culture and a part of the fabric of the lesson plan, and it can easily be embedded. I've seen it done many, many times by master teachers who have just been able to implement it seamlessly.
No, I get, I get the part with teaching it. I'm saying, so you have an incident, so I was at a school that used responsible thinking, so similar. And you have students who do behaviors, and you say, what were you doing, and they don't answer you. What should you be doing? And either they don't answer you, or they give a wildly inappropriate response. Then you're getting into the situation where the teacher just can't sit there in this back and forth, so what's happening then? So I'm saying, what I heard you say, and maybe I misunderstood, in addition to that instruction, when something happens, you're discussing with a child what could have been appropriate behavior. These conversations with extremely obstinate kids don't go as scripted. So who has the time to do that? Who's doing that?
Ms. Tweedy, governing board members, certainly there are opportunities within the instructional day when a more simple level of Boystown strategy may not work. So what you're talking about is a more exacerbated situation, so being able to provide context to that, inviting an administrator in, because all of the expectations for Boystown are across the board. So everyone on the campus is very well-versed in the strategies for Boystown. So what I would advise in that aspect is inviting the conversation to have someone else come in, perhaps work with the student, pull them out, have a more in-depth social skill instruction with the student, trying to calm them down, and of course, getting them back into the general ed classroom. We never want students to miss out on instruction. There may be opportunities to do that so they don't take time away from the rest of the classroom.
So I agree with what you're saying, but who is that person? Because what I'm hearing happens at most schools, and it certainly happened at my taught in this district, there isn't that person. Either somebody who's not assigned to a classroom, a reading specialist, an instructional coach is not doing their job to do this, or there's a school secretary who's not doing their job, or there's a principal who's not able to do their job. So who's doing this conferencing?
Ms. Tweedy, governing board members, I think it could be a collection of responsibility campus-wide. Again, the expectation for well-managed schools, as well as specialized classroom management, which is at Vista Peak, is to assure that everyone on the campus has the skill set and the toolkit to be able to work with any student, where it might be the principal, the assistant principal, the TOA, the school psychol, language pathologist, anyone who works on that campus and has the social skill instruction through Boystown would be able to implement and walk a student who is not responding typically in the classroom through a social skill lesson and try to calm them down and integrate them into the classroom. So your question is well-taken. Being able to spread the wealth, to assure that all staff members on a campus have the skills, is at the heart of Boystown instruction and curricula, and there are many opportunities for multiple staff members to participate with that, including a secretary. We assured that our Boystown training went to all classified and certificated personnel to assure that everyone had the knowledge base. And it's not a replacement for or a distraction from the work. At the core of it is really giving a student what they need for just-in-time social skill support, and certainly I think that is at the heart of everything that we do. We want to support our students as immediately as possible. I hope that answered your question.
I just, I think Ms. Tweedy was not speaking of the two schools that have Boystown. I think you might be talking about our other schools that don't have it. So what is the rationale behind?
Or even if they did have it, what I'm hearing is, and what I've seen with all these types of programs, whether it is responsible thinking or this, and the difference being in the, in the district I work for, they do have a staff member who is able to do that, so you're not canceling people's reading services and math services. And it, because it does take, because when, when you look at, say, tier three behaviors, and I think that's what we're talking about, I could see a tier, most students would respond to this. You've definitely probably got 5% of the kids who aren't going to respond appropriately to this conference, and who's the staff member then? Because it exasperates a whole school.
Right. So what I'm hearing, and I think one of the things that we were very interested in calling for this study session, is that across our 38 schools, we do have schools, when we visit at least, or hear things from parents and/or employees, you would be walking into school queue, and somebody's all excited about something, talking about whatever, and around that corner, I don't know that Johnny's sitting there because Johnny got, had to be removed from his situation, right? So we have students that are in areas that they probably don't need to be. We have people that are actually doing another job that aren't trained in whatever this behavior is. Right. So because, no, exactly, because they can't concentrate on, their job is the registrar, their job is the, I'm answering the phone, their job is the meter, greeter for our, our parents or whoever comes in. So what are the rationales and the differences amongst our campuses? Sometimes it's capacity, sometimes it's, well, normally it's human resources as the human bodies aren't available. But what do we do for that? We know that Boystown has everyone trained, and most of our schools or all of our schools minus those two, they're not. So is, am I hitting on something? Go ahead and tag on.
So I was a Boystown teacher, and we did Boystown with quite a bit of fidelity 100% of the time, and you, Mrs. Tweedy, what you were mentioning, when you have a child who behaviors are escalating, we would go, every, every child that was in our school had a point sheet, so a daily point sheet progress, or when they get to merit, they don't have point sheets any longer. But we would go through the process with them very quickly, where most reteaching points, when we were talking about social skills, might take 20 seconds to 30 seconds, the most at a minute. And you, you manage that behavior very quickly, you provide feedback, you give them an opportunity to earn back points that they've lost, and you move on. And then you treat the next, I don't want to say episode, or acting out moment separately. But you give them three chances, and then in our school, they left the classroom. So they went to a behavioral interventionist, and then that person was in charge of doing more intense one-on-one social skills training with them, and that might take five minutes, it might take the entire day, depending upon the student's escalation and what caused them to leave the classroom. So I think that when we talk about Boystown, that in order to do it with fidelity and to do it the right way, we need to make sure that we have properly trained behavioral interventionists in those schools that can do that work. That being said, going back to the other 36 schools that don't have Boystown, it would also, in my recommendation, I would love to see a behavioral interventionist or behavioral specialist on each campus, that maybe might not be the administrator, because the administrator is doing 15,000 other things in the course of his or her day, but somebody else that can be trained to, with social skill behavior, to utilize some of the Boystown de-escalation tactics, and then to also provide that support so that student is removed from the classroom quickly, so that the teacher can concentrate on their primary job of educating students, and then the behavior interventionist can work with the student to, you know, do one-on-one modeling, social skills, whatever needs to be done, and then they can be returned back to the classroom quickly. What I don't like seeing is I don't like seeing students that are receiving discipline in the office because they've acted out and the teacher can't handle their behavior, and they're just sitting in the office, listening to all of the conversations that happen when everybody answers the phone and they're being entertained. They might be an in-school suspension, but I don't agree that the front office is an adequate place for students to be serving their in-school suspension. If my son or daughter got an in-school suspension, I would not want it to be fun for them. And I know that sitting in the office and watching everybody coming and going would be quite a sight for them, and they would, they would be entertained. So I would love to be able to find a different happy medium to where we can have some of those resources and training on campuses for our staff.
I think that perhaps we could segue to, with that, to Scott, because I think, Scott, part of what you're going to address with SEL, as far as the culture and climate overall, will speak to some of what a couple of the board members have talked about. Do you want to talk about that, Scott, some? And then Dr. McCusker, too, that may be helpful later on to make sure we're clear about the two different programs of Boystown right there. So, yeah.
Well, hi, thanks for having me. We, we've mentioned before, when we, before, when we came before the board, that our SEL work team is continuing. In fact, we met today, and we're trying to create a sense of urgency around evaluating SEL programs in our, in our district, and taking a look at a way to create culture in our schools that takes our need for discipline down. We, that's been our focus, you know, we, we, we used to fill up Vista Peak with first-time drug offenders, and we don't do that anymore, you know, we get kids back into school. So we really want to take a look at what's causing the behaviors, because what happens is, for some campuses, they feel like a suspension, an out-school suspension becomes their only option for extreme behaviors, and we don't want that to be the only option that we give our schools. And so we really are looking at SEL programs that are based in research that we can ask our schools to be part of. Boystown's an excellent one, but it may not be the right fit for every school in our district. We have lots of different kinds of schools in our district. So that's really our focus this year, is to get that stuff evaluated, to have an understanding of what research-based SEL programs we would like to recommend, and then try to get those going next year for the schools that don't have them.
Well, and while I agree with everything Ms. Reed said, that you still have to have a staff member that can do it, but when you talk about research-based in the schools, and I've done a lot of research in this area, I think one of the distinctions when you do research programs, you need to research what's appropriate for the kid, and there is a difference between students who would respond to cognitive approaches like these and students who lack empathy. They will only respond to behavioral interventions because they're aware of their own feelings, but not so much other people's. And so you also need to look at that when you look at intervention, and to have things for the students who don't maybe have the skills to have empathy, and it's great to try to develop it, but until it does develop, a lot of these types of programs don't work for students when you look at a lot of the conduct disorders particularly, and you should do research on that as well.
So I think, Ms. Tweedy, you're highlighting really that tier three, right, and that subgroup who may be needing that individualized response as far, as far as for behavior. Do you, Dr. McCusker, do you want to maybe use that to talk about BAT some, in terms of how they support with some of the tier three there with Gen Ed students?
Governing board members, President Ordway, one of the factors that lives under Student Support Services, and we're very happy to have the BAT team as a part of our larger Student Support Services team, but they do not only provide supports to students on IEPs and our 504s. There is an expansion of thought to be able, we are always in the area of prevention and intervention. So assuring, as I referred to earlier, with our Boystown implementation at Constitution, I'm in the business of reducing the referrals for special education and really building that preventative layer of support, not only, again, for students on IEPs and 504s, but for all students, because all students can benefit from that. So our Behavior Autism and Assistance Team provides guidance and support to our campuses through multiple formats. And so we have expanded through the last five years of my life in the district to providing very specific interventions, not only for students, hypothetically, a student perhaps with a conduct disorder, and very specifically looking through the lens of a board-certified behavior analyst, and having the BCBA really evaluate why the behavior is occurring, in what structures and environments it occurring, what time is it occurring, who the teacher is during the behaviors, and so really getting down into the meat of why the behavior is happening. Being able to provide those preventative measures, and then working with the school team alongside with the school team to assure that not only do they understand that in context, but how they can remediate that behavior and build those pro-social skills. Again, we want to replace the behavior that is negative with a positive behavior. So we are doing that not only with students on IEPs and 504s, but with Gen Ed students. Another need that has come from our campuses is those students that need support or those teams that need support ASAP. And so being able to dispense some wisdom, behavioral wisdom, in a more immediate way is a factor that we addressed two years ago. We now have video conferencing and video modeling that is available for our campuses. They can sign up and have a video conference with a BAT team member, whether it be a BCBA, a board-certified behavior analyst, or a behavior consultant that can provide them with aspects of support. Not always is it a student need, sometimes it is a classroom need, sometimes it's a classroom management need, sometimes it can be a more systemic need for the campus to really develop and build social skill instruction, let's say, or behavior intervention planning for a Gen Ed student. That is something that is not unique in special ed. And so we want to be able to dispense our wisdom and our support to all of our students, and one of the recommendations from our behavior work team was the expansion of BAT. And I am a proponent for the expansion of BAT, particularly to support all students, and really come from that behavioral intervention lens. We also collaborate with the PBIS specialist, Ms. Nanette Jackson. She also sits in on our BAT meetings. We meet every Friday morning and have a collaborative meeting with BAT, where we talk about specific students, specific campuses, in specific area of needs. We dispense and identify the BAT team member that is going to work specifically with that team or student, and we immediately assign that so they can start that implementation and collaboration with the team. Ms. Jackson's support and guidance is from the Gen Ed lens, and she brings us perspectives as well, students that she's working with, and asks and invites us into the discussion of supports that we can provide from BAT. Again, I think the expansion of BAT, the ability to provide more context to our Gen Ed students for prevention, is something that will help us as a district.
Is there a long time that people have to wait, or an extended period of time, that if I say I need to talk to someone, is there a period of time? And then also, do all the staff know that there is this video chat availability?
President Ordway, governing board members, there is, it depends on the case. So I don't want to sound like an attorney, but it depends. Specifically, if the campus is asking for specific intervention for a student and involvement from a BCBA, we do need to assure that we have parental permission to provide context and guidance from a board-certified behavior analyst, that's part of the guidance that they have to live under. However, if there is an immediate or urgent need, we understand that all 38 of our campuses have urgent needs. One of the reasons that we identified the video modeling and video chat was specifically for that. If they had a need that week that we could address, with our, with our limited staff members at this time, we have two BCBAs and two behavior consultants, it is a large task to dispense staff members to provide that support with immediacy. But we want to be thoughtful to the needs of our campuses and our students, so we did initiate the video chat and modeling specifically for that.
I think.
Doctor, excuse me. I just have a quick question. Okay. Did you say you have a four-person team? Is that what I just heard you say?
Ms. O'Brien, yes. At this time, our BAT team is comprised of two BCBAs, behavior, two BCBAs and two behavior consultants. We do have one behavior tech at this time, and that is a classified, paraprofessional role, but yes, it is a, it is a small but mighty team, and they do amazing work.
Okay.
How many, how many students or classrooms have you, roughly have you worked with this year?
Ms. Reed, governing board members, that's an excellent question, and we just met last Friday, so I have a very specific answer for you. 134 students specifically, and within the context of that, I cannot give you exact numbers for the video chats, but I can certainly give you that information. But when you can think of 134 students on multiple campuses or four team members, we have certainly been providing guidance and support. members, we, we have certainly been providing guidance and support and they have not all been special ed. We have had Gen Ed students as well.
So with a hundred and thirty-four students and whatever the number is via video chat, how, how many have we not? Because I'm just trying to figure out if we need more people because, you know, it's a good question, right?
Yeah, and to that point, I guess, I would love to know in your a hundred and thirty-four count, what's the number of Gen Ed versus special ed? How many video conferences? And then I think the other, well, to me, the other pertinent part here is that what are our vacancies in special education teacher spots? What are our vacancies in our Gen Ed spots? I.e., are those being filled by, I, I'm partic- I, I know sometimes we do the, the six-fifths at the high school level, which still creates a vacancy and I would like to know those differences, but more importantly, what I'm curious about is how many classrooms have a long-term substitute in them? Because I think that, to me, that's a, a piece of the pie that we need to be looking at because if you have somebody in there that is a certified teacher, they're going, you might not have some of the discipline problems. I realize we're talking about tier three and, and that's a whole nother ballgame, but maybe if you had some inter, an interception earlier with a certified teacher, we might not elevate to the tier three. So that is a piece of this puzzle that's really important to me to know.
Clarification for the data that we provide you. We do have long-term substitutes in classrooms for vacancies as well as FMLAs and other needs like that. Are you looking for both? Or we can, we can provide you both and just differentiate what is for a long-term leave and what is for a vacancy?
That would probably good. The vacant, I mean, an FMLA, we're always going to be dealing with those kinds of things. So to me, that's normal business. We hope that it's smaller, but if you can identify those without too much trouble, that's great. But more importantly, I, I want to know about what are sheer vacancies where we just, we can't find the people because they're, they're not out there and, and we're in a shortage.
And then also to that, are these long-term subs being given? Not the thirty-second drill, but are they being given the same information on how to approach this as everyone else? Because I know that we sometimes have to get them in and, and then they might watch a video, but I want to make sure they're getting the same type of instruction that somebody that would be there forever would get.
And, and I guess the piece that's missed, I think.
Okay. So, so the piece that I was, I was thinking or I'm not hearing, so I think it's great to have these interventions and they, they take time to work. But what's in place to address the media, safety and educational environment? Because if you don't preserve the learning environment, nothing else you do matters. I mean, you can adopt any curriculum, PLC all day, but if nobody's able to teach and, and then there's the safety of the other kids. So I mean, I, I think every campus needs the ability to safely remove a student and have a place for that student to be. And, and, and so it's great to keep intervening, but until you get there, there has to be something practical so that everybody on the campus can keep functioning while these interventions are working. At least that's where I come from. Because I've taught in both types of places where we've had the support that a student can be removed relatively quickly if it's necessary and, and nobody wants to see that happen and typically you do have interventions and hopefully it's not very many kids that's occurring. But when it is necessary, having taught where we've had that support and have not, I've had my instruction brought down every single day in, in an environment where I didn't have that and I had some very tough kids. And even to the point where I was told to bring my classroom into the hall for the safety of the rest of the class while the student repeatedly trashed my classroom and nobody learned. And I don't have that anymore. Those, if, if that were going on, the student would be safely removed and, and obviously the goal is to get him back into the classroom. But I think instruction still needs to be happening and the safety of all the other kids needs to be a priority as well when it's an extreme situation and every school deserves the staffing to make that happen and all the kids. So that's where I'm coming from.
Who wants to answer that? I saw Gary looking, I'm gonna, you looking. Just your name tag, don't worry about it, we know who you are now.
I could say, I think Ms. Tweedy, the, I don't think anyone would deny the, the fact that as far as having an immediate piece, that that perhaps could be helpful, right? And so that, yes, indeed, some of the interventions that we've talked about is not going to work the next class period, that it may take some time for that. I would say that heretofore though, in terms of our experience, it's been our focus has been more on the SEL side as far as working to create that overall climate and culture that's going to reach all of our students there. And so that's been our focus, heretofore.
So I think, oh, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say President Ordway, to, to your original question, to Dr. McCusker was the aspect of, do folks have to wait, right? And so I think just also addressing that, that Dr. McCusker and I are aware, yes, that has been a concern that has been voiced by, by some folks, that at times that they feel that it has, it takes time. And as Dr. McCusker said, with four folks and thirty-five thousand kids, it, there's resources at times are limited for that. And as such, that's why we have looked at the Futures Report and also the Behavior Work Team who has recommended to increase some of those resources.
So at this moment in time, Ms. Tweedy, I'm trying to get a little bit more into what you were saying. At this point in time, if you have someone in, a student in your room that has done something, that has disrupted the room, I'm throwing a bottle, a chair, or, or whatever it is, something that you can't stop, right? And the other thirty kids in the room. So what do we do as a district, campus by campus, if it's different on different campuses? What do we do? What, I'm a teacher, this is what I do when that happens. What does that look like? Finish my sentence.
Sure, and that will depend by campus when you go there. So yes, it could be, I mean, many times it's going to be the principal, right? Who's there, who's gonna take that student and the principal will be working with that student in another place on the campus, whether it's the principal's office. And when I say principal, I mean inclusive of, it could be an assistant principal or a dean who is working with that particular student. It could be depending on the grade level, it could be a counselor, it could be an RTIB person. And many of our title schools, as you alluded to earlier, Ms. Tweedy, they, several of our schools have an RTIB position. And so that particular person may be the one that's working with them. At times we know in extreme situations that a classroom will leave, right? And they will go to another spot while someone manages and helps a student who is in need in, in a particular classroom. And does that cause a disruption? Absolutely, it does. That does cause a disruption to, for the students in that room, the other twenty-eight or the twenty-nine and to the teacher, but sometimes that is necessary to do.
But each campus has somebody other than that teacher that will take care of that.
Yes, yes.
And then we have maybe depending upon space capacity, there's a different place that this person will go with the student.
Correct, which may be the principal's office at times, right? For that.
But it wouldn't, that situation. Go ahead.
Ms. Ordway, when, when I worked in the district and I will say, that's not always the case because the principals are at meetings or there'll be more than one and you'll call. And the K six schools do not have an ISD room. And then the principal will sometimes try to attempt to put them in the front office.
Well, that's where I was going, I just.
They don't have the space and they don't have the staff.
And I'm hoping that since you've taught here, Ms. Tweedy, that we have gotten much better at what we do, but the, that's why I asked about the space because I know not all schools have.
Correct.
A, a quiet room.
Correct. I mean, like Legend Springs, for instance, is one, I was just walking that campus with them for another reason and, and you're correct, there is no, there's no spaces there, classrooms for them to go to.
But in situations like that, we would not put them in another classroom just to get out of that environment, nor would we sit them in the office for the whomever to watch.
Has it, does it happen? It, it probably could happen at times, especially when you talked about when a principal is gone or do we sometimes have meetings when the dean and the principal would be here? That happens and at those times, there is a designee, right? That's on the campus to help deal with situations that come about. And so I, I would say in those particular situations, are there times when the student is brought up to the office? Probably so.
In a situation where they had to leave the room because of such disruptive behavior, that can happen that they would sit in an office?
It's possible, yeah.
I don't, well, go ahead.
That, that is one of my concerns too, because when we, let's say that the principal and the assistant principal are off campus and we have a designee, what I've heard from some campuses is that they don't always have training in order to, to e- effectively handle a student who is escalating. They don't feel like they can control the student, they don't know what to do, they don't know what to say. So that's my concern is I want to make sure that whoever this designee is or our front office staff, that they have adequate hours of training underneath them, that they know what they are supposed to do, or even if there's some sort of way to almost have a certification for someone on campus so everybody has a, a campus designee that has a certified behaviorist for, for something. And I would love to, to get some data and some information on that, of what that would look like for our district, what that would cost, what the certification hours might be. I think that we do have people on campus that would want to be able to do that and be able to support their students and, and their faculty that way. It would be nice to be able to help them find a place and maybe provide an addenda for them to be able to do so.
And President Ordway, Ms. Reed, that information is certain information we can get most of our, in terms of getting it campus by campus to get at that level, we can get, most of our designees have an admin license. And so they are folks who've gone through a program and they are, they, they search for that opportunity and many of them do, right? They want to know, hey, when, when I'm, when you're gone and you're at a principal meeting, can that be an opportunity that I could take advantage of? So many of them do have an admin license that are the designees, but I would need to look campus by campus, Ms. Reed, for that exact information to see. Dr. McCusker.
Ms. Reed, President Ordway and Governing Board Members, another aspect or another theory of application that we adhere to in Deer Valley is, is certainly CPI. CPI is a training protocol that our staff members, not all, but our staff members go through to assure that they have a skill set for, let's say, non-verbal de-escalation. Being able to walk a student through an agitated state and being able to safely calm them down verbally. The last thing we ever want to do, and I believe Ms. Tweedy referred to that, having to remove a student from a classroom can be very traumatizing, not only for the student, but also for the staff within the classroom. So being able to verbally de-escalate a student is adherent and, and the top priority to CPI. And certainly anyone that goes through that training, one of the things that Student Support Services, ALs and Human Resources is looking at is defining and supporting our school site administrators to go through the CPI training as well. Because the verbal de-escalation is something that is exactly what you're referring to, Ms. Tweedy, being able to articulate a safety plan. Let's say I'm a principal on a campus and I know my five high flyer students, my five students that have a higher level of behavioral need, whether they're special ed or general ed, I am going to have a safety plan in place. I'm going to have assigned staff members within that safety plan as my, as a principal to assure that they're getting their needs met. I'm going to also assure they have a safe place to go on campus if in fact they are agitated, as Dr. Zerbuck referred to. But the CPI model, I think, is another aspect that also provides context for our administrators, our paraprofessionals and our special ed teachers specifically.
And, and at this moment in time, only certain people are trained for that?
Who gets the CPI training?
Yeah. And what does it stand for so? While Dr. McCusker say that, go ahead.
President Ordway, Governing Board Members, I'm actually going to invite Ms. Moffett into this discussion as we're collaboratively working on this to define the guidelines of who is currently trained and our hopes for who will be trained in the future.
So I think you're asking some really good questions because they're the same questions we are asking. The things that you mentioned, Ms. Tweedy, are the same things that we have noticed as of late and have worked on in Cabinet and are working on through Human Capital. So specifically to, to this training, currently mostly paraprofessionals receive this, this training. They take priority in the amount of slots that are available for that training. What we are building with the Human Capital Work Futures Work Team is our options for all paras to receive that training, the recertification training before they begin the work or within the first thirty days of their work. All special education teachers will also receive that training and all administrators will receive that training with the idea that each location, this is what Gary was referencing, each location does have a discipline plan that they are to put together. Part of that should include a flight team or a flight plan. So we have district flight teams, we have campus-based flight teams. And I think it was Melissa just mentioned that there are some students that we know have the propensity to perhaps be volatile or get excited and we need to be prepared to act on campus for those students, but sometimes others surprise us. But when we do know about those kids, we can train the appropriate people to know how to de-escalate those particular students. But with that team on your campus and that team identified, we should be more responsive. We should have a backup plan. The principal should be indicating when I'm not here, this is who steps in and this is how we handle that situation. I, I would say that there absolutely could be students that are sitting in, in the front office, but the students that would be sitting in the front office could potentially be waiting for a parent and would no longer be in, in an aggravated state. The, the determination to have them sitting there would be because they are capable of doing that at that time. But each campus, even if they do not have a room that is built specifically for that function, each campus has designated a location where they can take a student to de-escalate. And sometimes it's designed specifically around a specific, a child. And a different child could be taken to a different area because they were de-escalated better at a different location of that campus. But all of that together are the things that we are working on.
But now, the staff you were saying that was trained was paraprofessionals?
Yes.
Those are primarily special education staffs?
Yes.
So are they responding to general education behaviors then?
I, I was, yes, it can happen. It can happen that they would be responsive to general education students. However, usually your administrators will be the first to respond to general education students and there should be a plan in place for, if the administration cannot respond immediately, there would be some type of plan in place for the teacher, where the teacher would know what, what steps to take if administration can't be there in a couple of, you know, minutes.
If, if it's the sped employees, so again, I think we're back to a staffing issue for Gen Ed kids. If it's the sped employees, generally they're mapped to the sped and, and I don't think most paras have a lot of extra time once they're mapped. So I think it's unrealistic to think that they would respond to general education students. See, and, and when I hear this, I hear the principal could ask this person, this person doesn't exist. And, and I guess that's my frustration. I, I mean, when I worked in this district, because I wasn't a classroom teacher for part of the time, I was a reading and math specialist, I didn't have a class assigned to me. So I would frequently pick up these duties and be with the tier three kid and chasing the tier three kid and, and doing all those trainings and et cetera. And it was fine that I did it, but all of the kids who were identified for reading and math interventions weren't getting their interventions because that's what I was doing. And, and so I know that that's still happening because even in hearing this conversation, the Gen Ed staff does not exist. The principals are assigned to be evaluators, they're getting pressure to improve performance, to look over PLCs and to think, and I know the hours it can take with one, one extreme student to, especially if they're a runner and you're chasing them around the school all day and then you finally do get them under somewhat control. This can take hours. Our principals don't have this time. The Gen Ed staff does not exist. And so to say that the principals are designating these people, if they are, someone else isn't doing their job. So, I mean, and that's, I guess, where I'm coming from.
Ms. O'Brien? Thank you. Dr. Zerbuck, I'd like to go back, Zerbuck, sorry. You're, you were talking about the admin certificate and that when those folks get the admin cert, are they getting the CPI training? Is that usually covered? Is that usually covered in that or sorry, uh, whoever in the room can answer that question?
Um, there was a time when we were required to receive that. Why largely we are bringing that back? But we did train all of our administrators about, in pre-K-12, about two years ago. So we do have administrators that are not trained right now.
Okay, and to, I guess, follow that up and, and to Mrs. Tweedy's comment. Um, I love the plan about including all those people in the CPI training, but I think clearly we need to look at having gen ed folks and building the capacity so some gen ed folks can have it. And I, I don't know if that is something where we look at them receiving an addenda or something so that we have gen ed staff. Or, or if we already do that, that's great, but how do we build that capacity? Go ahead.
Ms. O'Brien, President Ordway, governing board members, uh, we are actually analyzing that exact question that you just asked. Uh, one of the priorities that we have identified is assuring, um, that we have a protocol in place and we have the staff to train, uh, our staff members. At this time, um, we do have CPI instructors. Uh, the majority of our CPI instructors, it will come as no surprise, are BAT team members. And so, uh, they hold the majority of the expertise for that. But we are, as a district, uh, we want to expand opportunities for CPI instructors so we can spread the wealth, uh, for the behavioral training, uh, like we discussed earlier, across the breadth. Uh, so we can support all students, not just students, um, on IEPs or 504s. So at this time, we are identifying a training protocol for additional trainings as well as identifying, um, an addenda for this work. At this time, um, the BAT team, uh, provides the CPI instruction, um, outside of the confines of the instructional day. And so they are able to train our parapros. We, of course, pay our parapros during that time. But being able to build that capacity within the district is something that we're focusing on.
So on this, uh, list where it says training for EPs and TLA's that you had on the tenth of February, um, what was that?
President Ordway, governing board members, uh, that was a training that was actually in conjunction between Student Support Services and the ALS department. It was based upon, uh, feedback from our site administrators. They really wanted to know how to tackle, uh, the behaviors that you were referring to, Ms. Tweedy, those behaviors that take away from instruction. And so what was solicited from the field, uh, were case studies or actual incidences that have occurred on the campuses. And they had a Q and A protocol. Uh, Ms. Jamie Aldred, who was a coordinator in Student Support Services, as well as Ms. Jen Minor, who is a manager in ALS facilitated the training. It was very well received and they talked about, um, the village concept of the, it does take a village, uh, to truly support those, uh, behaviors that are in that top three percent of any type of MTSS structure. And so they really specifically focused on those students.
So the, the training that was given, um, is it possible for us to get?
President Ordway, governing board members, it's actually hyperlinked, uh, within the presentation for your review.
Awesome, thank you.
Do you get that electronically, President Ordway? Or do you only get the hard copy? Okay, all right, so it is hyperlinked.
I'm sorry, Mrs. O'Brien.
Is it on, I don't know if it was uploaded to Board Docs.
We can check it, yeah.
Was not earlier today.
But we did, the intention was to link it there.
Okay.
Dr. McCusker with, um, I know our time is limited here. Do you want to, um, talk about, um, our conversations with Vista Peak and FBI as, as far as our initial talks?
Thank you, Dr. Zerbuck, President Ordway, governing board members. Uh, we are having conversations with Vista Peak, specifically with Principal Brian Feinberg, uh, regarding the current, uh, program that we have in place at Vista Peak, which is CBS. And certainly looking at developing a more comprehensive approach to the CBS structure. Uh, Dr. Zerbuck and I received feedback from campuses as well as our BAT team receives feedback regarding our current CBS process.
And the Futures Report as well, yeah.
Absolutely, as well as the Futures Report. Um, it did analyze that there are some areas that we could improve upon. And so with that, uh, Dr. Finch, as well as Principal Feinberg and Ms. Linda Lewis, who is a manager in Student Support Services, actually visited, uh, private placement, uh, that, uh, we felt we could learn some strategies from. And so being able to, uh, view that program that is in place, it's called the FBI program, uh, and bring back some of that skill set and some of that knowledge and seeing how we could incorporate it into our structure in Deer Valley is something that we are currently looking at. Um, as well, if I may, um, just to move forward in our discussion for behavior today, um, i- it is part of the Vista Peak structure, but also being able to bring back some students on IEPs. I know we're specifically speaking about gen ed, um, but certainly building the capacity at Vista Peak. Um, being able to bring back students on IEPs, uh, from other private placements outside of the district is also the inherent hope of our expansion for Vista Peak.
So, um, I guess, as we've been sitting here, Ms. Reed, Ms. Tweedy and Mrs. O'Brien, um, if there's anything specific that you know right now that you would like the collection of data that we could read to understand a little bit more about where we are currently and, um, where we're going to be, you know, at increments, more specific than what's here. If anyone has a request now, if not, I say that we, that, that we think about it and send it because I don't want this to drop and I want to understand how, how we're moving forward now.
My outstanding question is then, is there any potential for Vista Peak to serve as gen ed students, like an alternative to suspension program? And then if so, if you could send us information about that?
That would be awesome. Anybody else right now or do, Ms. Reed?
Could you send us some information on, um, the functional behavior intervention, please? As far as what, what you found, what you learned at ACEs, you know, if there's links to a website that gives more information? And then I had a couple of questions as far as the CPI training. Um, can you let us know, you mentioned that there are slots, there's a certain number of slots. Can you let us know how many we currently have, how many people have been trained so far? And.
Do you want that differentiated between, um, special ed and gen ed?
Yes, please. And how many, um, what, what our capacity might be? So if we were able to specifically hire or designate someone to just do CPI training, maybe over the next year, since we're in the budget process, to be able to train our staff. Because CPI training, if we were to go to an outside organization, depending on the one or two-day training, is fifteen hundred to two thousand dollars. So if we could get some information on, you know, if, if we have people that want to do this, what that would look like and really what our ROI would be on it? If you think about, if we were able to train those, um, teachers and staff members, what you think our ROI would be?
Mrs. O'Brien?
If I could just, on the vacancy question, when I said certified, I, could that also include your psychologists, counselors? Okay, I didn't know if, just as clarification.
Okay, so you guys have everything that we want right now or that we need. And I really do appreciate that we're moving forward and we're not the same way we were four years ago or ten years ago or, or however, we're moving forward in a, in a, a good clip. But, you know, we always want to do things faster and have more people, you know, be trained because we want the kids to have what they need, all of the kids. So we appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, excellent information.
You're welcome. I would add, I would conclude, President Ordway, on that too, that just, um, with respect to the data and knowing more about the frequency of some of these incidents, that, um, that is one thing that, um, Scott, Warner, Julie Frank and the whole ALS team working with Dr. McCusker, that, um, we are looking at that too. You, you can, um, probably guess that across thirty-eight schools, some of the data input, um, is not the same at times. And so one of the things that we have set for our goals this year is to make sure that we're looking at how clean is the data that we're looking at to make sure that the decisions that we make are informed by, um, clean data, not bad data.
And, and we do understand that each school has individual needs, but there's got to be some uniform process to decide or, which makes sure, ensure that the needs are being taken care of, however specific to that campus and student. Cause they're all, you know, they're all specific to, to a campus. So anyway, thank you, and I guess, um, we can move on to our next item, which is Ms. Moffett, correct? Please go. Sitting, I can't, I don't look that way, sorry. And I know you have two clickers over there, so let's get moving, come on. Click.
Okay, so for, um, grounding purposes, we're going to go over some basics and flow because we believe that by going over the open enrollment application process, it will largely answer, um, or perhaps prompt the questions that you would like to ask this evening. So I'm going to gloss over a couple of these slides because you're very familiar with them as we just went through JFB. So you know that we are guided by statute and that our policy mirrors largely the statute. Um, I want to also remind you that, uh, we have been an online process since 2014. So it came over to HR one year after it had been an online process. So there is a lot of data that we can collect going back to that point, but prior from, prior to being electronic, it is really difficult for us to find, um, open enrollment data. Our cycles, as a reminder to you, that we do, um, still look at priority consideration. And priority consideration is largely, um, it does matter. It matters for staffing purposes, but because we take open enrollment every single day, we are adjusting our staffing accordingly on a daily basis all year long. And we'll explain what that looks like, um, in a little bit. But priority consideration is mostly for marketing to help our community, um, i- indicate their intent for the upcoming year. We do maintain wait lists at all times. Um, when, if we are at capacity at a certain level, the waitlist will be maintained until someone determines they don't want to be on the waitlist any longer.
Okay, Ms. Moffett, I'm going to stop you. Uh, Ms. Tweedy, do you want the word capacity explained at this moment while we're talking about capacity?
Explain what?
Capacity, you had a question the other night about capacity. So I thought at this moment, perhaps Ms. Moffett could explain to us how they decide what capacity means for all students.
Yes, and, and thank you for prompting that. We do have, um, a couple of slides on capacity, a little bit further down in the presentation. If that's okay, we'll pause and, and get to it at that point, okay? Um, also the top bullet on this particular slide, um, this indicates the flow. When an open enrollment application is received, it is first received at the campus level, reviewed at the campus level. It is then seen by Human Resources. If it's a general education application, if it's a special education application, it is reviewed by Student Support Services, sometimes then Transportation as well. And then HR, I'm sorry, I'm not speaking loud enough into the microphone, thank you for telling me. Um, and then HR makes the final move on that application, indicating whether or not, um, the applicant is approved, denied or waitlisted. Here's what the process looks like in a flow chart. So Guardian submits the open enrollment application. I, I want to highlight this because this causes so much confusion in data. And I, I wanted to specify, for example, the parent that spoke up. I believe it was Mrs. Jones that spoke up the other evening regarding the process and, and the data that was collected. I hope I have the right parent. It is not a one-to-one correlation. When, and I'll point that out again when we look at our numbers. One number in an application does not equal one student because one applicant can indicate three locations. So when we say that three thousand or five thousand applications have been reviewed, that does not mean that there were five thousand students that we were re-. It just means that that many, um, interests were indicated by, by the parent and the student. So again, the, the school reviews it and then moves on to HR and Student Support Services. As soon as we know what we're going to do with that application, we hit a button in the process and the Guardian is notified via email. Often we're in, with phone communication with the parents as well. And just note too, that by per statute, the Guardian has ten days to enroll the student at their campus of interest, if they are approved.
To the school review?
Yes.
When you go back to the school review, are there very specific reasons that they could accept or deny? And, and furthermore with, with HR and, or is it just at your discretion? Or, or is there just clear criteria for an acceptance or denial at that point?
Yeah, it's, it's a good question. The criteria is in policy. So what our policy allows for, it may be reviewed for, um, capacity first. And then the applicant may also be reviewed for, um, suspensions. And I believe that's it, just those two things. So their own capacity and, and the student's, um, discipline background.
Is that what the district does too? Just re-reviews for the same criteria that the school just got done reviewing?
That's exactly right.
So it's a duplication of the process or?
Sometimes.
I- is it a check and balance?
It is a check and balance. Um, and, and it, it also, yes, thank you, it is a check and balance. Because what we might see in staffing could be different than what they might see.
Or vice versa.
We may think they have room, um, and they, then they, we have a conversation with the campus and we see that they waitlisted or denied the student. We don't quite understand because it looks like they have the room. And then they explain to us their particular situation. And after that conversation, we may accept it or after that conversation, we may waitlist the student. This was last year of just points of interest, I guess. We did process fifty or five thousand seven hundred and seven applications. Three thousand seven hundred and sixty were inside the district and nine, one thousand nine hundred and forty-seven were people that wanted to come in from outside of the district. Again, remember, this is not a one-to-one correlation. That does not mean that one thousand nine hundred and forty-seven students wanted to come here, but that's how many applications we did.
So.
One application can be.
So how difficult is it to?
Sorry, I was just gonna say, so one student actually could equal three applications is what? Okay, that's what I, that's.
And how hard would that be to disseminate or to?
Out separately?
Yeah, to extrapolate that information?
Not exactly sure, but I can find out.
That would be awesome, yes.
Um, and then the, if you look at below again, I wanted to reiterate that when you look at sixty point four percent, you may look at that and think, oh, that doesn't seem like that's very many people that were approved. But again, that is not necessarily representative of people, rather applications, because you could be approved at one location and then it looks like in the other two, because you put in for two others. You were not approved for those two.
So what, so that's the question then? If you get accepted at campus one, do your other two look like denials? Do you mark those as deni- denials?
Not necessarily, because you can be waitlisted at two campuses and approved at a third.
Right, but what you're saying is if you, if you, if we applied to three, right? And I got accepted as one, what happened, how are the other two labeled?
Right, if I'm accepted at one and I, and I say, thank you, Mrs. Moffett, I'm so excited, that's my school. I don't want to be on anybody else's waitlist because I, this is my forever school. What happens to my other two applications?
What are they called?
What are they marked?
Your other two applications will still be sitting there. We just, because it's a flow in the system, because you are approved, it, it stops and it doesn't continue to flow, so it freezes. But your question, what I.
What are they classified as?
Will it show up in this count?
Right, where, where will it, will it show up as a, I'm still, those are still waiting at the end of the year?
When you say sixty percent approved, would those two be considered in the forty percent that were not approved?
But Ms. Tweedy, could you?
Ms. Tweedy, please.
Letting, Mrs. O'Brien.
I just want to finish my train of thought. So because that makes, in, in the one, in the, and I don't remember the parent's name that emailed us and requested the data. It, it looks like at the end of two thousand fourteen, fifteen, that we had fifty, um, students waiting. Now, I understand that that could just be fifty applications and maybe it could only be thirteen or fourteen kids, depending on what was going on. But to me, at the end of the year, that's fine, you could still be waitlisted for the following year because you didn't get your, uh, an assignment. What I don't understand though is if I got my top assignment and I say I'm not interested anymore, how, those kind of hang out, do they hang out there as being still on the waiting list? Which would skew our numbers potentially for both gen ed and special ed kids. And then the, the number that Mrs. Ordway asked for, or you offered to get her, which is to break out what's the students versus applications, that is incredibly important to the, the bottom number of sixty point four percent because, a- and likewise in the charts that parents. Because, and likewise in the charts that parent sent us, because it looks like we're either waitlisting a whole bunch of people or our approvals are out of whack, so...
It does if this is our only data point.
Right.
Because when we are taking these students and we're saying, "Yes, you can attend this campus," we are tracking those students. We're paying attention to the amount of students that we have accepted, I guess, against the amount that are already enrolled there. This is, this application management system is merely that.
Right, but when we look at it, that's what we see.
Correct.
Because we're not on the inside knowing all of that.
Correct.
So if that's what we're seeing, then that's what the public is seeing.
If they request the data, yes.
Okay, so if they request the data, that's what they're seeing. So tonight, this is what everyone's going to be seeing. Because I know there's thousands of people watching this live stream. Anyway, getting past there, you know I need some levity. But it would be, I think, very effective for us to understand more when we're making policy and judgments on things, to know that, no, we didn't turn away this many people. This is what we did. And I think it's also the key to understand what capacity means. Also, whether it be Gen Ed, Special Ed, or your hybrid group that needs the gifted and the remedial or whatever, you know? Because we have so many different kids, so we need to understand exactly what these numbers are that you're giving us. And maybe you can't do it tonight. But with this kind of information that we're giving you or question, it will help us much, have a much better conversation and understand what we're doing.
Okay, I understand that.
I think.
Yes, no, and I do appreciate you pointing out that one-to-three thing because that is a huge number. It can really inflate it. Thank you.
Again, that's if they request three. They may only request one, they may request two.
Completely understand. Thank you.
I guess I would just follow up though, and because understanding what the other 40%, but can you distinguish when you bring it down to a student as opposed to an application? How many were Sped and Gen Ed, two as a percent?
Yes, we will look at that.
Okay.
This slide represents what we have done so far this year for next school year. So we've processed 3,566 applications. So far, 1,719 applications were approved. And you can see the difference between in-district and out-of-district. In this case, most movement has been inside and less movement coming in from outside the district, similar to the year before. Okay, so determining capacity. So based on our discussions, the last governing board meeting, we're going to spend some time talking to you about what capacity looks like in our district. And then I do want to point out, because I'm assuming that these types of questions would be asked, that we did take some time to look at our own practices to see if they are grossly different than other districts and if they are in alignment with what we should be doing. So I do want to point out again that we did have the OCR review where we were following reporting as far as they were concerned. We do follow statute across the board and that our process has been legally vetted. I would say since it's been in HR, it's been legally vetted annually. We've looked at different aspects of what we do in HR to make sure that we are on the up and up and that we're doing the best thing that we possibly can for our students and our community. So we do feel confident there that we're doing the right thing. And then Melissa also took some time to talk to our benchmark districts, their practices when it comes to general education and special education processing of applications. So we'll first point out here, we had conversations around class loads. So when we're looking at capacity and resources, this is what guides us in K6. I am going to clarify that when we're looking at 712, we have contacts and not class loads. So there's so much more flexibility than a high school has. I remember during the boundary conversations, there was the question, "What's capacity, what's capacity?" It is so dynamic at a 712 location. What you're able to do with your staff and what capacity looks like and what classes students want to take, that it does look different. And we do track it differently there than we do in the K6 area. So you see through the certified manual, when the board approves our certified manual on an annual basis, they are also approving what our class loads look like. So when we are looking at whether or not a campus has capacity at a grade level, if there's an applicant in fifth grade, for example, and they have three teachers, so that means that they have room for 99 students, we look at first the amount of students that are already enrolled there. If it's an immediate application, those ones are easy. If you want to come in tomorrow, I know definitely how much room we have at that location. When we're predicting for the next year, at many of our locations, we really do have a strong idea of how many students we're going to have because we have year after year patterning there. And for the most part, those students can reliably roll up to the next grade level and we know how many students we can accept and still be comfortable with any resident students that might be moving into those areas. Some locations have more volatile enrollment. And some of our campuses will request to go beyond that threshold, the two that we try and put in, we call it our cushion. Some principals will request, "Can I go beyond the cushion in this particular case? Because I know that I'm going to be losing some students." And we do have campuses that do, that have turnover more often in their student enrollment. And so we will add more students to those locations. Many of our principals hold firm for that cushion because they know that they are going to have some move-ins or houses are being built. But we do want to predict and be as stable as we can possibly can be in the spring for the fall because the consequences of not being somewhat controlled is that our staff goes through a grueling process called surplus. And if we aren't nicely tightly monitoring as much as we can what open enrollment, how many students we allow through open enrollment, then we are going to cause quite a bit of movement, which as you guys know, can be detrimental not only to staff, but to students. I do also want to let you know that for next year already, Sierra Verde, Stetson Hills, O'Connor, Mountain Ridge, Sonoran Foothills, and second grade at Park Meadows have put themselves on the, lost my wording. They don't have capacity right now at their locations.
You said Sierra Verde, Stetson Hills, San Diego, Connor, Mountain Ridge, and second grade at Park Meadows?
Second grade at Park Meadows. I believe that we do have some other campuses that at grade levels have done the same thing, but this was off...
But you have four schools, off the top of your head, that are just closed.
They can't take...
They cannot take anymore students.
Students right now. We also know too, School 31, we will have to be very mindful in the amount of open enrollment students that we take at that location in these next coming years. They will be one of those same types of campuses. During the regular student year and part of what we're predicting for the following year, so regular student year, I'm sorry, that made no sense, during current year, this is a reminder of this process. We do review the enrollment report. It comes every single Thursday. I think you guys get it too in the update. We do review that report. We look at the student enrollment. We look at open enrollment applications. This is usually a lot busier in the fall when enrollment is still coming in, students are still moving in at higher rates. And we look at our contingency staffing and we allocate more staffing to locations where more students moved in than we expected and more open enrollment applications are sitting at that grade level. If those open enrollment applications are sitting there, we can ask all of those kids to come into that location and add a staff member. That's part of our weekly review. We do that all year. We did it today in Cabinet this morning.
Good evening again, President Ordway, governing board members, and Dr. Finch. I am going to pick up the aspects of Student Support Services role in open enrollment as those were very specific questions asked by you as a governing board. First and foremost, I think it is very important and validating to remember in Deer Valley Unified School District, our adherence to IDEA is solid in that we have a full continuum of service delivery on every one of our campuses in Deer Valley. And so what that provides for open enrollment is that if you are at School A, School B, or School C, you're going to get the same level of service delivery as you would at the other two schools. So I think it's important for us to be cognizant about that. That is an advantage in Deer Valley Unified School District. So let's dig a little bit into the open enrollment role or process for Student Support Services. Jenna already articulated what happens from the general education perspective. So once the school determines that they have general education capacity, let's say at the grade level, the application is then submitted to Student Support Services for our review. And so we have to look through different facets to assure that we have the capacity in Student Support Services to provide supports for students that I spoke about earlier. We have ratios in Student Support Services for our K6, K8, and middle school campuses. It is a 1 to 15 ratio. And that is, our 1 to 15 ratio is for IEPs, the number of IEPs that our staff members write. As well for our high school campuses, our ratios are 1 to 20. So that would reflect that a high school service coordinator would have 20 IEPs that he or she is responsible for. Another lens we have to look for is the paraprofessional services, is that is the staffing that we have to assure is available on the campus for capacity. As well itinerant services, which is inclusive of many different facets, including speech-language services, any type of services for hearing impairment, visual impairment, assuring that we have motor therapy, occupational therapy, physical therapy, nursing services, any of the items that could be identified on a student's IEP. And then another process that we vet, again, to assure that we have a checks and balances between Human Resources as well as Student Support Services, is the involvement of our Transportation Department. They are a very important resource and we want to assure that they also have capacity for routing and assuring that they can transport students to and from the campus and the home. So at that time, once we go through that process and it is very streamlined, it is the same process that is adhered to for every application that comes to us, we either approve or waitlist in Student Support Services. I just lost my little name badge there. That's all right. I think we're safe. I think everybody knows who I am. So specifically, I worked with Human Resources. And there is a slide about this, but I just wanted to note the ability for Student Support Services and Human Resources to work in tandem for open enrollment, I think, is why our open enrollment process is successful and consistent and adhered to. We have conversations, if not daily, certainly weekly, but it is a partnership and a relationship that we depend on to assure that our students and our families are seen with equity and consistency. So specific data for Student Support Services in 2018 and 19, in-district students, there were 39. Out-of-district students, there were five students. And this would be specific to students with IEPs. One student, when it came to Student Support Services, was denied in the year of 2018-19, and one student only. So I think it's important to recognize that Student Support Services, some of the data that was represented in the previous report to the board by the parent, respectfully, some of those numbers could have been reflected and are reflected at the general ed level. They may have been denied or waitlisted at the general ed level for capacity. 2019-2020, in-district students on IEPs, 54. Out-of-district students were seven. And again, in 2019-20, one student was denied at the Student Support Services level.
So Dr. McCusker, for clarification, you're saying that there is potential that those open enrollment requests for the IEP students never even made it to the Student Support Services level because they were denied in that initial step at the campus and/or through HR? I guess I should have also asked Mrs. Moffett that too, correct? That's what you're saying?
Ms. O'Brien, governing board members, yes, correct. There are times when, again, because of the partnership between Human Resources and Student Support Services, some of the applications or some of those do not reach Student Support Services because they're at capacity at the grade level, at the campus level.
Okay, and then just for clarification, is a student with a 504 considered the same as an IEP? Or that's a whole different category? And where does that fall in here to complicate matters?
Ms. O'Brien, governing board members, that's an excellent question. They are not viewed in the same way, but we're certainly respectful and thoughtful about our students with 504 services as some of our students have accommodations that we need to be sure that we can meet.
I just have one question. So with the, the reasons why we would be at capacity, I don't understand why itinerant services would be in there. They are not, because they're itinerant. I understand the rest of the reasoning. That one, I don't understand.
President Ordway, thank you for the question. We also need to assure for itinerant service delivery that we have the staff members assigned to campuses and to students that can meet their specific needs. There are some students in some campuses that have a higher load of students that have more significant needs. If I may provide an example, a student who has a motoric need for occupational therapy as well as physical therapy may require more intensive minutes. And if there are other students that also require that, I would need to assign itinerant staff members, specifically an occupational therapist or physical therapist to that campus to provide those needs. So there is differentiation among the campuses.
Okay, thank you. Now it makes sense.
I had a quick question too on staffing. So with Sped staffing, okay, so every year you have kids graduating, kids going or moving in that might have IEPs. So if you're a special education student, kind of similar to a Gen Ed, you're going to have to staff that school accordingly, correct? So is there like a cutoff for that where they'd automatically be accepted? Because you haven't decided how many paras that school needs yet? Or, do you understand what I'm saying?
Ms. Tweedy, I am going to invite Ms. Moffett into this discussion because we can both answer it, but she will answer it better than I.
The special education teacher staffing is really what we're largely looking at because we can, if necessary, add a para. Or if a student moves from one location to another location, sometimes the para staffing moves with that student to that new location. So when we're, if we're, so let's talk about now. When we're looking at next year, we do consider rollout students, students on IEPs that would be rolling out, roll-in students, those that we know coming up from preschool into kindergarten, and looking at what the load is going to be. And with, at an elementary camp, it's 15 IEPs to one special education teacher. So that is what's going to determine our capacity at that location. So if the campus has six teachers, it's six times 15. If it's seven teachers, seven times 15 to determine what the capacity is.
So is there a date, like if they apply up to us? Like you know, you say with the two teachers, if they apply up to a date because you haven't staffed yet, is there a date where all of the Sped students are automatically accepted, just like the Gen Ed, because you haven't staffed? So you don't need to leave the two?
The cushion.
I do. We actually do not, on general education or the special education side, everyone gets in. We do have priority window for sure so that we know how many students do want to come into our locations, but not all who have applied actually get to come because we still have a variety of things that we have to review for capacity. In special education specifically, one of the things that we have to be mindful of is that finding special education teachers is a very difficult task. So we certainly want to be certain that if we're going to... So we certainly want to be certain that if we're going to add a staff member, that...
That you can have a staff member to add?
Well...
That there'll be somebody to hire?
Yes, so we are, we're being very careful with what capacity looks like in special education.
So I think we're looking for, is there a specific date, timeframe? What, yeah, what?
Yeah, there is. Okay, so we run staffing sheets. Finance department begins the development of staffing sheets in December, and we begin staffing meetings February, through, I'm sorry, January through February. Our final staffing meeting is actually tomorrow with Anthem School.
Oh.
But that doesn't stop our staffing process. So I guess you could say that we largely would like to know how many staff members we're going to be adding next year or meeting next year around this time. Finance department would love to know, so that they can begin to lock down the budget and inform the board. But we do know that sometimes we still have to add staff members in special education and in general.
But is there a difference if they apply before February and after February in the approval process on gen ed and sped?
Yes.
That's what I'm trying to figure out.
And it's uniform. It's for all.
We process far more applications coming up through January than we do right now. We have 700, a little over 700 that are pending right now. Most of those are waiting to get into O'Connor and Sonoran Foothills, but some of them are late additions for next year that we haven't yet reviewed and did not come in during the priority time.
So sped, if a special education student applied during the priority time, does their review process look different? Similar to gen ed, so before the staffing, because then you could just...
Well, from what I'm understanding, and then you can take that and take what I say, and if anyone else wants to add it. So if before February, what number did we use? February? I had a student with special needs. I would most likely get into my school, just like a gen ed kid was open enrolled also. After February, when you've already rolled up, thought about staffing, looked at who you can hire, then that is not going to be as, yes, you're going to get in. That would be more of a, I'm looking at my staffing, I'm looking at my capacity, I'm looking at this.
So President Ordway, you are correct.
Oh, my goodness, thank you.
Because we...
I'm kidding, I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
Because we take applications as they come in, and now, in district over out of district because of the change in policy, the more we accept, obviously, the less room that there is. So yes, as time goes by, there's less availability at some of our locations.
Right, and there might also be a cutoff date. If it, if you're looking for different teachers for certain campuses that have so many open enrollments, if you've looked and looked for teachers and you're coming up with nothing, you're not going to say, yes, come in, we don't have anyone to teach you, but please come.
That can be true, but again, we do review open enrollment every single day.
No, I know that, but I'm just trying to...
Staffing all year long, para and general education.
Ms. Reed, do you have any questions?
Yes.
Please go ahead.
When you're going back and you're running the data for us about the students who put in an open enrollment application versus how many applications, is it possible to extrapolate the data for where in the process a student may have been waitlisted? So if we had a special ed student, because you said, like, so if fifth grade was closed, just because at a grade level, that we could say, this was closed at fifth grade, not because they were a special education? So we could understand that data better? Like where in the process it paused?
So it's a student-by-student thing?
Okay.
So if we are able to run a report, we might be able to run a report to show you what one would look like. I don't know if the system can run a comprehensive report showing you what has happened to every single child, but we can find out.
Would it be able to run that report for students who have applied, who are part of special ed? So when you looked at their, at their, at their applications, whether or not they went through the process and came all the way to you, or they were stopped earlier because that school was closed or because that grade level was closed? I would just like to see really the numbers that we're looking at. And then with, and I don't know if we can do this too, but for these numbers that you gave us for SSS, open enrollment, how many of these are currently waitlisted? Does that make sense?
It does, and I do want to also specify that the multiple application, and I can do that in an update, the multiple application is largely representative of the waitlist denials and those, once you've been accepted, that's a real number. An accepted application.
Oh, and then the other, sorry, the other thing. Could you speak about the staffing levels of paras versus staffing levels of special ed teachers as far as how many kids they are allowed to service during the school day?
Ms. Reed, governing board members, specific to paraprofessionals, they are identified as a service on an IEP. Sometimes it's hard to look outside of, yes, there's a person providing that service. So for each paraprofessional and the service delivery for students, we would base that upon each paraprofessional's individual students that they support on the IEP. So it's not necessarily a ratio, but what it is, is individualized based upon each student's service minutes. You're welcome.
And we have someone who wants to speak?
Sorry for jumping in. I just want to thank you, President Ordway, members of the board. This open enrollment issue is a very kind of delicate issue, and it's in uncharted territory as far as Arizona goes. And I thank HR and student support services for all the work navigating this puzzle. But I think from a principal's point of view, when, Ms. Tweedy, when you were talking about, is there a date, you could add more staffing if there was more special ed applications? At Sierra Verde, like some of our other campuses, we're very fortunate to thrive on open enrollment, and we do kind of have a waiting list going across the board right now. And we are even out of physical space to house, so we have six special ed teachers and service coordinators right now, and three of them are sharing one classroom. So even if we were to staff another service coordinator or teacher, we would be out of the physical capacity to be able to place them, and then we run into a whole other issue of space. So I just wanted to add that, if that helps, so.
Very much appreciated, yes. And as far as the, I'm sorry, I have to put my glasses back on to read my note. The staffing for the service coordinators, is that done very much like the rest of the staffing for a teacher, based on the numbers? Or, okay.
At the elementary level, it's not solely based on the numbers. The numbers will guide the amount of students we can accept on open enrollment or could guide us if, with enough students resident-wise. We might need to trigger additional staffing because, per the certified manual, they are allowed or permitted to manage 15 IEPs. Doesn't mean that they are servicing 15 students. They could be servicing far more than 15 students. So we add, we have what we call base staffing, though some have more than base staffing and some a little bit under than what we, it's a DB term that we came up with years ago. A little bit less, and that's because we run the continuum services on each location. And the teachers have to be able to get to multiple grade levels at multiple content areas in a given day.
So this is where my special education ignorance will show through. A service coordinator is actually a teacher, is a special education teacher. Thank you for clarifying that.
And Mrs. O'Brien, I don't think it's ignorance. We all learn new things. Yes, Ms. Tweedy?
When you look at the 15 caseload, if you go over by how many students, does it trigger another?
So usually, when they have added around five students, five additional students, six additional students, we are allocating halftime staffing. When they go over that six, or they're sitting at seven, eight, or hovering around there, we're going to be adding a 1.0.
And until you find that person, does someone else share?
We fill that vacancy. We work with the principal to determine whether or not it's going to be a long-term sub. It's going to be a guest instructor. And some have been quite creative in hiring even, one, we let pilot this year, hired a general education teacher to fill a special education vacancy because statutorily, they're allowed to provide services, but they can't manage the IEP.
Right, okay.
And so we had a special education teacher manage the IEP.
One more question too. So when I was talking to the futures, they told me that best practice was caseload workload, not student. So is there, are you considering going to that, or are you keeping it at student?
It is a good point, and that is why we have base staffing. The IEP load is what we look at because of the employment agreement. We can't go over that because of the employment agreement. Or we, at least, the agreement says that we have to address it, and so we will address that through some type of support. We do allocate more staffing than at most locations because with base staffing, in order to provide services, we do look at workload, and that's why they get more special education teachers.
Well, because to say 15 to one, if you have 15 students who get pulled out for reading, or even pushing for reading, versus 15 students who are autistic, that would look a lot different, but they're both 15 students. So that's why I'm saying, is there, and when I was mentioning, that was my concern to the futures. He said absolutely that it should be staffed workload and not students. But then here I'm seeing a ratio with students and not workload.
That is correct. It's actually a ratio of IEPs that is not necessarily their student load. We cannot assign them without doing something, more than 15 IEPs. So I'll give you a couple of examples. We have allocated additional staffing to two locations specifically because of what you were mentioning. They had more, a quite unusual amount of special education teachers, sorry, students that arrived at that campus with different level of service needs. So we allocated additional staffing that direction, more, far more than what you would typically see at those configuration like that. They're both K-6 campuses.
So is there a ratio that like X amount of minutes would equal one student, like for staffing? And then you could, do you have something like that that you use, like that's?
You know what? Answer that quickly, but this is a subject for another study session because we're really going over the open enrollment, and I don't want to cut it short. I want to go into it at the proper time, okay? Well, it's always on topic because everything's connected, but not exactly for this topic.
Ms. Tweedy and governing board, I can quickly answer that as quickly as I possibly can. When we look at staffing, and I'm using air quotes, because when we look at staffing, we always want to provide the most veteran service coordinator, special ed teacher on the campus with students who may have more involved needs. For example, a service coordinator who is providing instruction in a learning center. We would want to assure that our most veteran teachers are teachers who are able to work with a variety of students' needs, as you referred to, are placed in that setting. So looking through the lens of workload and capacity, we do monitor and adjust in tandem with the principals. They know they're veterans, they know the experts on the campus, to assure that they are in the right location on the campus for service delivery.
Ms. Reed?
I just have a comment, and feel free to add any insight to it. But for some of our campuses that may have lower enrollment, but who also house a special ed preschool, I know that there are a lot of parents who want to stay at that school because they love the campus, they love the administration, they love how it feels there, and they are not approved to stay there. And so I would ask or task or something that we could be a little bit more creative, that if we've allocated a special ed preschool at that campus, that we might be able to figure out another process to be able to help those parents and families and students stay at that campus if they choose to, whether that means that they have the option to opt out of transportation for open enrollment, and they, you know, they're bringing their own students. You know, I don't know what that looks like, but if, you know, I would love to just be able to discuss that more because I know that that's a very big concern, and if the administration is on board with having a larger special ed population because of that in their school as they get older.
So that would be something that you, don't need to answer that right now, because you can answer the question right now. But it is definitely something for you to, for the future. So with that, any more questions that we have? Are you?
They're not done.
You're not done?
No.
But I was going to say, any more questions we have up till now? No? Then just kind of wrap.
The next slide on the presentation, I believe, we have already discussed. It's just another reminder about capacity and also looking through the lens of the 15-student caseload. And again, it references the number of IEPs that are written. So I think this is an important slide for review and consideration. When we look at staffing implications in student support services, and Ms. Moffett referred to this already in her discussion and review, we have to ensure in student support services to be adherent to IDEA and our students with disabilities, that we are able to provide the services as identified in our IEPs. So we want to be able to provide those services to, obviously, students. We have to first ensure for our students that already attend that school that we have the staffing and the supports in place to provide supports for those students. And we also have a child find obligation, which actually isn't the next slide, it's the slide after that. So I apologize, I guess I can't count. So we'll talk about child find as well. The ability to hire for the existing vacancies that not only occur in Deer Valley Unified School District, we are not in isolation. This is a statewide and nationwide problem and concern, so much so that the Honorable Kathy Hoffman, our superintendent of public instruction, just had the first ever state of special education speech. I have hyperlinked it for the governing board.
I've watched it.
Oh, excellent. I hyperlinked it for your review because not only does she have skin in the game as a previous SLP, but she also has insight into the nuances of what we're living with in our district. And so some of the data that goes along with that. Currently, there are 16,000 certified special ed teachers in the state of Arizona. However, less than half of those are actually teaching in schools. So when we look at the availability of the certified staff to fulfill these roles, we are already at a disadvantage. There also are shortages at a crisis level for our itinerant staff, which also live in student support services. That includes school psychologists, our wonderful nurses, speech-language pathologists, occupational therapists, physical therapists. And there are, those positions are out there. However, those professionals at times choose to go into clinical settings versus school settings. I don't understand why. I think we're where it's at, but they make those choices.
Some people just can't afford to work for public schools.
So there are other considerations when we look at staffing implications in student support services, and we talked about those already, our paraprofessionals, who are integral to the success of our students and our families. Speech-language pathologists, which I also referred to. They are very challenging to find, as they can find jobs in clinical settings. And then, of course, any additional itinerant staff. Respectfully, teachers of the visually impaired and hearing impaired are one of, although they are low incidence roles, meaning that not a high number of students have hearing impairments and are visual impairments. However, these specific staffing needs are very, very difficult to staff. We've actually looked nationally. I have thought outside of the box, upside down and sideways to be able to staff our VI services in the district. So much so that we've actually incorporated virtual services that are going very, very well. So much so that we've actually incorporated virtual services that are going very, very well. So additional staffing considerations, per the certified manual, special education teachers are not itinerant staff. Unlike other staff members that live in Student Support Services, like school psychologists, occupational therapists. I have the capacity and capability to actually move those providers around to service. President Ordway, to your question earlier, if there's a higher need, let's say at Sonoran Foothills because of a specific need for therapy, I would be able to dispense some more resources and supports to that campus. However, per our certified manual, special ed teachers are not itinerant. And Ms. Moffett and I have had discussions about recruitment and retention, which is something that is very important to both of us. As I already illustrated, we are at a disadvantage. We want to be able to keep our very important staff members in Student Support Services and cherish them and not have them go elsewhere. So being adherent to our certified manual is something that we want to be able to do because they make connections on their homeschool campuses. They're connected to the principal, they're connected to their team members on their school site. Again, it appears I really wanted to illustrate the ratios on this because they're, again, on this slide.
Well, and all of these numbers and the clarification with the three in one person it could be, I think is just very important. And it makes us a little bit smarter so we can understand what we're going to be, you know, shaping as a new policy.
The next slide is the child find obligation. President Ordway, you nodded when I brought that up. This is one of our responsibilities via IDEA, the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. We are always responsible for identifying students with disabilities, whether they're in preschool, elementary school, or high school. So that is something that we have to also be cognizant of when we're considering open enrollment, is we may identify a general ed student who is already living at Campus A. And we need to be able to provide that service delivery to that student. Again, Ms. Moffett referred to this during the general education portion. And we also adhere to the same process in Student Support Services. Again, if there's not grade level capacity at the campus, general ed will waitlist a student on or off an IEP. If there's not capacity for services, again, we look through the 80% of that service delivery, the 1 to 15, and then the 1 to 20 teacher ratio for special education. And then we also waitlist, we review, I can tell you, this is a very conservative estimate, one time a month. We do this on a weekly basis, as well as a daily conversation with Human Resources. But one thing that we've instituted this school year and also with boundary changes, just to be cognizant of our families that may be anxious about decisions for open enrollment. We have made a standing weekly meeting. Student Support Services and Human Resources meet every week to discuss the nuances of open enrollment. Again, as I stated at the beginning of the work session, that Student Support Services and Human Resources work very collaboratively. We happen to like each other a lot, that also helps. But assuring that we have constant and consistent communication. So Student Support Services is not doing anything different than Human Resources. That is very important to both of us as leaders. Ms. Moffett and I want to assure there's consistency across both of our departments.
Okay, so I'm going to remind us one more, and I know you have more, but as we're formulating questions, let's make sure we don't forget to send them in when we have more. Go ahead.
We just want to make sure that we give a whole heck of a lot of credit to Lydia Vittori and Peggy Rimby because.
And why didn't you have them here?
They deserve some rest.
That was their reward, not to have to come to the meeting.
Oh, come on, they know.
So I just want to give her a shout out because she works very hard.
Wonderful. Kudos to them.
All of this is very much appreciated, and we know that we're asking for a lot of information. But this information then, again, leads us to better decisions, and we can better explain it not only to ourselves, but to others. Because you just don't know it. And when you're in it all the time from that side, sometimes you figure we know things. And I appreciate that you figure we know things, but we don't always know them. Yes, Ms. Reed?
I just have one more, one more comment in regards to, let's say, a family at School A who is having a disagreement with the IEP process or the services provided, or they don't get along with the principal or special ed staff. You know, things like that happen. One of the issues that I've heard and that concerns me a little bit is that they aren't able to move to another school where they might be able to have a better fit with educational philosophy, or, you know, a new start with a new special ed teacher. And so is there a process for that where they can appeal to HR and SSS to be able to move to another school? Is there? So we can keep them in the district so that they don't go for an IEP?
I think there are two ways that we usually manage those types of situations. One of them is sometimes the parent has only tried one location. They have their heart set on one other location. And we are sometimes able to share with them all the other locations that do have availability, and they can choose from those locations. So if their goal is to avoid their current spot, and they just want to go to a new one, we can provide some options. There's another avenue, not often used at all, and it also requires an extensive amount of action to be taken to remedy a current situation. But we do have, and it's not handled through open enrollment, sometimes it is necessary for us to move a family. And it could be for a variety of reasons, but it hasn't been unheard of that every, that it's appropriate to select a new location for that particular student. It's not common, but it is another avenue that we have.
Ms. Reed and governing board members, there is also always the opportunity for any of our families who have students with disabilities to go through the mediation and or resolution process, which is free for our families, which is through the Arizona Department of Education. We are always willing to provide a resource for resolution prior to a family leaving. It's very important for us to be able to hear our families' concerns.
Okay. Just hold on. Yes, ma'am. I need to, just tell us who you are.
Hi, my name is Gillian Jones. Thank you for holding this study session today, and thank you for allowing me to just take a couple of minutes to comment. I just wanted to bring up, again, my experience. I received an email today on the open enrollment application that I had submitted for my son. I not only enrolled him for that Canyon Springs STEM Academy, as I had mentioned in my previous comments, but also for Notara Canyon, where he currently attends, but we are zoned for the new school. So I received two denials slash waitlists. And I just wanted to mention that my email says, "We are not able to grant open enrollment for 2021. This campus is experiencing heavy growth," which is not one of the campuses that was mentioned earlier, that is closed to open enrollment. And enrollment exceeds classroom capacity in the grade level you requested. It does not say anything about special programs, it says grade level. So again, my comment, or my frustration, is that things are not being explained clearly to parents as to why students are being waitlisted. I don't know when I might hear back about this. It does say that your application will remain on the waitlist. You said you continually review them. I don't know if we ever hear back. I would hope that you guys will discuss how you might be able to keep special ed students at their current schools, given the boundary changes. I had an IEP meeting with my son's IEP team last week, talked all about how excited we are for the progress he has made and the IEP goals he's going to have going forward, and the team he's going to have for third grade. I know the special ed teacher that he would have for third grade, and she was in the meeting. So again, we would like the opportunity to, number one, be able to open enroll our students in a school. But number two, be able to keep our kids at their current school if they have been affected by the boundary changes. Thank you.
Thank you. And what I would like to, I would like to invite the three of you to have a chat at some point, so you guys can do that. And there is nobody else that wants to talk? Okay.
One last question.
You are going to come. Come on, come on, come on.
My name is Jamie.
Thank you. Last name?
Malvias.
Thank you.
My son is a student at Bel Air Elementary and has an IEP. I'm new to this entire process. I know that he has been at Bel Air Elementary for an entire school, I'm sorry, a whole calendar year, and then some. We are now being told that we have to change schools. We were not aware that there were going to be three different options, so we did choose one. I guess my concern is we have not been kept in the loop as to what is going on. I feel that we are being forced to change schools now. I know that we are, you know, like this young lady, I didn't catch her name. I received an email saying that my son could stay at his current school. And I responded to the email, it was from the principal, and I responded to the email, and I said, "Well, he has an IEP. He's already been waitlisted, does this mean that he's been accepted?" And she kind of came back and said, "Wait, he has an IEP?" And it was kind of like, I received an email in error inviting me to be part of this school. I know, there's a lot of bits and pieces. It's very frustrating, and I don't know where my son is going to end up. I don't want him to change schools. And it feels like we're being waitlisted for reasons that aren't very consistent.
So.
So I don't know who that goes to.
I can answer that. The, in fact, I talked to Monica today. You probably receive, you're going to receive a letter tomorrow. It's in the mail today, particularly to the Bel Air students. They're working at that group first, the Bel Air Mirage Green buyer group. That's coming out today, I think she said today. And so however long it takes to wind through the machine, but in the next couple of days, you should be getting a letter on that. Particular to your student, actually, would pertain here as well. The, each school, I'll explain it this way. According to our machine, those, our schools are full, quote unquote. If you go and, all the students that are changed in the boundaries, anybody that's affected by a boundary, you're actually adding them, our machine is adding them to the top. And so that's why we waitlist everyone until the dust settles, for lack of a better term, until the kids from Union Park or that 31 move there from Notara Canyon, et cetera, et cetera, and get enrolled in their school. So that's what's causing the system to, for us to be careful. We don't want to put 1,000 students at our new school, for example. So it's going to come, it's going to be a little bit sticky here for a while until all these parents start choosing where they're going. And so we actually hired another person just to do that. That's helping Monica write all those letters, starting to track the, they will individually be tracking you here soon. But we couldn't do anything until the board gave us a thumbs up or thumbs down on what's moving where. So once we know that, then we can start responding. So we're kind of in the responding stage now. So you, you may even get conflicting information or had conflicting information before the board voted because our computers do spit out stuff, so. But you will be getting contacted individually soon. You're going to have to put an X on the box of what you prefer, because remember, Bel Air is going to be totally open enrolled. And so I think we just made a decision a couple of days ago on how many special ed teachers we're going to have there. And so that will obviously be a variable as well. And then as you listen to the PowerPoint, capacity is the key word here.
So again, I'm going to, thank you, Dr. Finch, I'm going to, you have two very lovely ladies that you're going to get to talk to after the meeting.
I move to adjourn the meeting because we had an eight o'clock stop time, so.
Thanks for coming.
Second, somebody? Oh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I am going to, also, we have to call this executive session to order and then the, and change it because we have it scheduled for tonight. So it is 8:05. I am calling the special meeting of the governing board executive session to order. Roll call will show that all members are here minus Ms. Frank.
I think you took my.
Oh, I did, here.
I move to table the executive session until February 25th at 5:30 PM.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
And just for information, we are minus a board member, and we would like to have all five board members there for this executive session.
I move to adjourn this session.
Awesome.
Oh, wait, do we have to adopt the agenda, though?
We did.
Oh, we did.
And we changed it.
Okay.
Yes.
I move to adjourn.
Second, all those in favor, say aye. Aye.